It's so funny Barbara, that computer is always so kind of open at six thirty. That computer is always like slightly ahead of my computer.
Yeah, I'm still at six twenty nine.
Really? We're going right to different.
We can do whatever you'd like, man.
Everyone would rise for the second meeting. I had a leader of student five of the United States from and two of our bullet for vicious fans. One of the issues under God, new to this whole liberty and justice problem. Thank you everyone for doing have the evening. We have all five counselors present. I guess we have three counselors present and two counselors that need to be reinstated.
Like a ball.
My, my good one. And we've got the rest of the crew here this evening. Please go ahead and start with our organizational annual stuff Barbara. Thank you to the community on behalf of myself and John for re-electing us. Shannon.
Yes.
We can raise our right hands and you repeat after me. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitution.
That I will support the constitution.
And will obey the laws of the state of Maine.
And will obey the laws of the state of Maine.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of town counselor.
The duty of the office of town counselor.
Tax assessor.
Tax assessor.
And overseer of the board.
And overseer of the board.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your autograph. Yeah, so that's.
I know, I was almost signing a test.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Barbara. So that's our first order of business. In order to run the oath of office, our second order of business is to elect a chair and vice chair for the ensuing year.
Would make a motion that we elect Mallory Cook as chair of the twenty twenty four year.
Second.
Thank you. For the nominee time, we have a motion and a second. Any other nominees? All those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by you. Thank you all. And for vice chair, I would go ahead and offer a motion to nominate John James as vice chair.
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any other nominee question? All those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by you.
Thank you all.
Congratulations John. Thank you everybody. And next about adopting our meeting rules in addition to the administrative code. So I did just pull up back in May of this year, May twenty third, two thousand twenty three, the council adopted rules of order and procedure. That we, and this is sort of what I'm referencing today when we say that we're adopting meeting rules. I pulled from the May twenty third, two thousand twenty three support doc, page sixty four. Do you think we need to get these into documents for this meeting? Or are they posted out by the governor?
Just when you make your motion, just reference that May twenty, the ones were approved on May twenty third, twenty twenty three.
Great. Any other discussion or any modifications that anybody wants to make to our rules of order, some like six months? Okay, I'll go ahead and offer a motion that the town council adopt Roberts rules of order in addition to the administrative code and the Southburg Town Council rules of order and procedure that were adopted on May twenty third, two thousand twenty three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Melissa? Aye.
Aye, motion passed by you. Thank you everyone. And a next signing the policy for treasurers to support of dispersment warrants for employee wages and benefits. This is again thing that we have to. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to sign the policy for treasury dispersment warrants for employee wages and benefit for the ensuing year.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Melissa? Aye.
Mallory, yes, motion passed by you. Thank you everyone. Okay, that takes care of our kind of off cycle stuff this evening. In fact, we've got minutes from October twenty fourth. Does anyone have any edits to leave it? No?
Right, Madam Chair, I move we accept the town council meeting minutes of October twenty fourth, twenty twenty three as written.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Melissa? Aye.
Aye, motion passed by you. Thank you. And up next, we have signing of the treasurer's warrant. I'll just go ahead and motion put us. Our motion signed treasurer's warrant dated, uh, the date of November ninth, two thousand twenty three. And you add one million, two hundred fifty five thousand, five hundred ninety seven dollars and seventy nine cents. I got a second.
A second.
Thank you. For discussion, this does include the payment to S E D thirty five of the large.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
And it's probably, there's two different payments to, it might even be three. To treasuries or the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, they're both for twenty two thousand dollars. Is it broken down? Or actually the street is one, two for twenty two, one for twenty one. Broke it down?
It's a weekly check that we do to the state of Maine for all the F S tax, uh, from the town clerk's office class.
Okay, all right, that's why the weird how close they are.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That hasn't seemed like that. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussions on the warrant? All those in favor sign the warrant, say aye. John?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed by you. Thank you. We're now into the presentation section. The first is the presentation or update on the downtown revitalization project. This is your seeming things regarding to share with us with one.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Tim, for giving me the opportunity to be involved with this project and be the staff lead. Chair Cook, Vice Chair James, and members of the town council. I'm happy to be here to present to you some initial results of our first meeting. The committee has been well received. We had an overwhelming response. We've taken eleven of the eleven applicants. We have two town council members that are part of the group, Jessica Seer and Melissa Costella. We have eleven community members comprising of six businesses and five residents. So it's about as equally balanced as you could possibly get on that committee. It represents, the committee represents a great cross section with a wealth of experience, education, and knowledge of South Berwick and its downtown. There are also three consultants. Jeff Preble is our lead consultant from Wright Pierce, but he also has a landscape architect and another architect engineer that's also part of the committee. So we have a pretty robust group. The first meeting was held on November sixth. Everyone was in attendance. I want to thank Tim for coming in and opening up the meeting and just welcoming everybody. And thanking everybody for their interest. The energy of the group was really palpable and people are very excited to be involved. As I said, Jeff Preble is the project's lead for Wright Pierce. I am the lead staff as your economic and community development director. And Tim said and precisely said, and it was really a great point. We are at a turning point and it is time for us to do more, to restore, to revitalize, and create a new energy from bridge to bridge. So we began with talking about the goals of the downtown revitalization plan, which is to develop a publicly supported vision for the downtown, to develop an action item list, and to create a consolidated document and plan that would address and prioritize the identified items, issues, and improvements that would revitalize the downtown. The plan would include short term, midterm, and long term projects and initiatives. It would be set up in a format that meets the Department of Economic and Community Development, known as D E C D. So if you hear me use that acronym, that's what that is. And it enables the town of South Berwick to apply for funding at the state and federal levels to implement the action items. The comprehensive plan goals, policies, and strategies are also going to be incorporated within the plan as well as the economic development market analysis and the downtown traffic study. So this plan is not going to be held completely in silo from the existing plans and everything will be incorporated. We also talked about the project limits, which are going to be kind of malleable as we go. It was decided that the primary focus area will be the main street, bridge to bridge, Route two thirty six and up to Route, up Route four, Little Ways, and would also include the Cummings Mill area, Norton Street area to make sure that there's connectivity from that section of town into the business district. The second area will encompass a larger section of the village area. And there's a draft map, which I've included, which is a lot better than the scratchings that we did as a group that has produced, been produced by the consultant. We also talked about the base mapping and background documents that would be needed. And key and critical is to talk more about pedestrian safety in effort to create more sidewalks, adding wayfinding and signage. So wayfinding in case people, it's just one of those buzzwords where if you come into an area in a downtown, it says bridge here, downtown shopping. So it doesn't specifically say the business, but it helps you find your way through the town. Creating linkages between businesses and the residential community, adding additional parking or access to parking, creating a historical walking tour. Adding an historic district overlay map where some of the important topics to consider is are part of the downtown revitalization plan. We also were asked to talk and brainstorm local issues and concerns and strengths. So strengths included that people in the group felt that we as South Berwick had a strong sense of community, strong sense of volunteerism, strong interest in historic preservation, and that the ski hill is a unique area to actually have in a community that most communities don't have. And some of the issues and weaknesses and the reason why I hate to say weaknesses, it's more like things that we need to deal with. Including one to help people stay here and welcome new people to the community. Look at parking, focus on creating a multi-generational community where people of all ages would like to stay here. Needed increased connectivity, work on balancing residential business, historic preservation community. And also to include Berwick Academy more as a part of our community and our downtown. And then there was also a comment made, which was very on point, that we used to exist as, we are now existing as a service district. And we used to be more of a retail and shopping district, and we need to bring better balance into that and to strive to increase retail. And how do we focus on making this a more walkable community and create opportunities for public art in the downtown area? The public input process is very key and critical to this. We can't operate in a silo nor can we get just the input of the group of, you know, elevens or so folks and consultants and staff. So we're going to have an initial downtown revitalization plan, public workshop, a public engagement event sometime in January, twenty twenty four, dated to be announced. Breakout sessions will be on the four major areas identified in the table of contents that was drafted. We will have a questionnaire publicized on the town's website, Facebook page, distributed in local businesses, and potentially look at a Q R code where people can actually just walk by a business and see the sign and Q R code and answer to the survey. The other project timeline includes another public workshop that'll be a draft plan workshop, hopefully held in May of twenty twenty four, but the final plan presentation to be held in September, twenty twenty four. And I have a couple of other things I want to add after that, but before I do that, I want to ask counselors Jessica and Melissa if they have anything else that I've missed or want to add about your participation in the program.
I think the, the meeting itself was really well facilitated and the, again, the energy of the group and then variety of participants in the committee is just fantastic. It was a great cross section. You know, and I really want to reiterate the, all of these reports, being able to connect with each other, streamline, it won't be contradictory. This is the perfect timing for this. I'm pleased to be involved.
Well said. Pretty much everything that I would have said as well. And especially like what Jessica just said, with the comp plan very close to being finished and, you know, taking into consideration other things like the town hall, the direction of the town hall. It's all, it all is a melting pot where everything comes together to make what might happen in the town hall. So yes, very exciting. It was a great first meeting, grew a bunch of people. And I think it's going to be exciting and interesting.
One thought that I had about getting to the second workshop will probably be in May. I wonder if that's something you can coordinate with the town meeting. The town meeting is usually pretty short and we'll have a decent amount of hopefully people here for that. We should maybe transition into this workshop, I'd say.
That's a great idea. Absolutely.
Any questions or anything for repeat or anything else you?
If there aren't any questions, I just wanted to put in a plug for the new Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission hub program. So I'm doing the best I can to get the word out. It is actually on the town's website. I canvassed a few businesses, but if there's a business in South Berwick, or anywhere in New York County for that matter, that has opened their doors between January one of twenty twenty and five eleven of twenty twenty three, that has been severely or even slightly impacted by COVID. If you can prove and justify that, you can get anywhere from ten thousand to twenty thousand dollars worth of grant money to compensate for your business being shut down, payroll, inventory, capital, any kind of expenses and reach out directly to S and P D C. It's on their website, but you can call me and I can help you walk your way through the application. But I just want to make sure that people actually knew that while I had the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, great updates. Next, you know, T project update. I know I just am not them, but I'll let you take my.
Evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. The council's brief update for the M D O T project. It's being incorporated into the state DOT twenty twenty four work schedule. Project management will be assigned. Hopefully in January, Steve Cole's been working, working with us so far on the project. He's our district representative. He's retiring in twenty twenty three. At the end of the year, new DOT staff are going to be hired to replace them. They anticipated the entire state work schedule will be announced in January. Where the South Berwick project will be scheduled in. Project R P we hope will begin sometime in the first quarter early to mid spring, starting in the early.
So that means that the, the, you know, like dying, that kicks, kicks off with.
Right, so then the first thing they're going to do is write, they're going to write the R P.
Yeah.
They're going to do it for the town hall. They're going to do it for the Town Hall to get, to get the final design phase done and then incorporate all that. And I guess that'll take probably, you know, it's going to take twelve, fifteen months. They'll have that, then once they have that, they'll all come before us, we'll get it all finalized, get that approved. And once we get all that done, that'll give us an exact dollar figure, almost a penny, just very much like your few, we're talking about to the Town Hall, that'll give us a very defined number. Then that number is what we can go, myself, Denise, can, you know, in the state, we'll start getting federal funds, hopefully get federal funding through, then we'll know how much we have to lock to pay out of our purse. And then, once they get that done, we get the funding formula figured out, we get funding in place, then we get the project out again. So it's going to take, you know, it takes three or four ideas, but it's a major undertaking, major project.
Yeah.
Yep, that's where.
Great. Any questions for them?
Nope, it just looks like they're holding to the world of fast track and it's, they're just there to fast track it, and that's pretty good. Yeah. I'm impressed.
Great. All right, public comment. Anyone here want to speak to anything that's not on the agenda? Anyone in the room? Hang on the phone? We don't have any unfinished business this evening. Our new first, sorry, our first order of new business is air quality reports.
Madam Chair, we hired a company after we had the furnace issues and all the other, other product issues here to determine what exactly there was going forward in the Town Hall repairs. So we retired, we had that report done, we have it complete, which will be an addition into the Town Hall renovation piece, and I'll pass it over to the Assistant Town Manager who handled that project.
The good thing is they didn't find anything unhealthy throughout the building. Few areas of concern, but moisture levels, temperature levels are great, you know, carbon monoxide levels to be concerned about. First floor, they did find a little bit of mold on the AC unit in the server room that runs twenty-four seven, keep it below seventy degrees because the sensors are warm. So we will look into replacing that AC unit. The second floor, the biggest concern was the carpeting is being old and it, I mean, I like saying this, but elevated skin cells and miscellaneous fiber activity have been found. So we are getting the carpets cleaned this week on Friday. That is already scheduled. Yeah, we have obviously a lot more sanitary. And then in this third floor, they, there's a couple of tiles that they didn't like, the ones to the one that's up there above Mallory. But in general, throughout the building, those were the biggest concerns was the ceiling tiles throughout the building having water stains on them. They didn't think anything was too overly active. They did recommend, you know, changing out the tiles, that way it's easier to monitor them. But in light of everything we have going on, you know, we're going to keep that going. That was the biggest thing. Oh, yes, right here, yeah. The lack of air handling system. There is an air handling system on this floor that will bring in some air from the outside. This is the only floor that has any air handling system at all. So that is obviously highly recommended to keep the airflow going for everyone that's up there. The unsealed perimeter penetrations and foundations in the exterior was the biggest thing. We do know that. I did actually check in with civil consultants, they're still working on that, after my floors on the outside. But those are the biggest things, ventilation system, worn, carpeting, ceiling tile, and cracks around the foundation and on the outside of the building. So nothing, it doesn't sound like there was anything super new or egregious, I guess. On this, which was.
They have all their handling ducts full line downstairs for our air conditioning office. The return of fuses, the filters and the ducts have been cleaned, so they recommend all that should be cleaned.
One thing I just noticed before we vote on this, Mr. Pederin on the homepage, your last name, it's listed as Pederin.
Well, I came out last week, but I will tell a couple where I saw.
We'll have to update that. Any questions for Jen on the air quality report? Yeah, is this, will this be posted to the Town Hall project page? Absolutely. Once it's been submitted.
Well, in that case, Madam Chair, I will accept the report from seventy and more engineers for the air quality report.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor of accepting the air quality report, say aye, John.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I wanted to pass this by you. And then that now is officially blessed by the town phone, we can put that on the town website. Number two, RRPQ for Architectural and Engineering for the Town Hall. So we, as a council, a few weeks ago, kind of changed our path a little bit, as really to the Town Hall project and decided we need to do this really thorough RRPQ. And I know Tim has been working a lot with several groups to hook that up with RRPQ, so Tim, I'll let you kind of take it away.
Yeah, we were working, I asked for Ken Westman, who's a citizen in town who works, and he does this, he writes RRPQs for a living. So I asked him where he has a technical expertise on this to assist me. I also reached out to Mike Lassell, who has a technical expertise. Mike did help a little, but not a lot. He kind of just offered a few suggestions. This was mainly Ken's working with me, and I want to say it's probably one of the best RRPQs I've ever seen written. I want to thank Ken greatly for his time and effort. He's done a lot of work here to help me out to get a good product. And I want to thank him for making that trip, coming in tonight. He had a family emergency that he was working around and he made it happen just so he could take care of this. So I want to make sure publicly that I reach out and say, Ken, thank you so much for all your help. It was a great load off my shoulders. We worked. We had three work sessions where we worked together putting this cracking it. So now Ken's had to kind of explain some of the meat and potatoes of it. In accordance with what Vice Chair James was looking for, I think we've hit the nail on the head. We, this will give us a really good, I think, defined result by both the company that we can either move forward with or find greater detail with. Spoken services is very detailed. The deliverables, I think, are everything that you're going to find you're going to want in this project. So at this point, what I've done is giving it to you, and would like to have a discussion to see what you think or where you want to go, what you want to do with it. My hope would be that we pass this, it's here for you to get your input, talk to Ken and me, we'll talk on occasion. And then we would approve this next meeting on the twenty-sixth, and I could get this out, get this started. There is a timeline that we put into it. It's very detailed, which keeps the project on track and moving forward. And I feel very, compared to what I put out to for the first project we were looking for, which is only what we asked.
Yeah.
I feel this is a thousand percent better for what I think you're looking for. So I'd like to turn it over to the council and myself, with Ken, Ken is here. I'd ask Ken to come to the podium and answer questions, and hopefully you look at this and give me your thoughts on it or.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Ken. Is there any kind of like overview or anything that you want to share with us?
Yeah, I mean, I think as an overview, the goal here was to get more detailed than the last report, so but not pay for more than you want at this stage. So it was balancing the risk there, framing up a project with a heavy emphasis on the cost and understanding the cost, getting the right team to evaluate what's here so that they can get to that cost confidently, but not going to full design because we still have to make that decision, are we going to renovate this or are we going to build new? So I think that was the goal of how this is written. You know, as far as industry standard, this is a little bit more than concept design, so concept design would be about ten percent. Schematic design is twenty percent. This is like fifteen percent. So we asked them to go to concept design so that we know what we're pricing, but we're taking the costing a little bit further. So typically for a concept design, you would get architectural floor plans, elevations. You wouldn't have drawings from other disciplines. We don't need drawings from the other disciplines right now. We don't need mechanical or electrical drawings, but we do want those professionals to look at what the cost to renovate this will be. So we're asking for some schematic level services, bringing in those other disciplines, but not asking them to go to the full drawing phase and design, and that's to, you know, mitigate cost until we make the decision.
Three through, basically, three through eleven give me everything that I would ask you for that night we were discussing, right? That's going to give us the meat and potatoes for everything in this building right now to go forward. That's thank you for all the time you put into this, and also, that sets me right there. If they can answer three through eleven. A lot of info right there that we could just make a decision.
It's Madam Jen.
Yeah.
So I'd like to ask Ken, you just kind of ruled the document briefly with the council, and I got, I got something handled. Can you just kind of like do a quick overview of the whole document?
Sure thing. Yep.
And so that everybody gets it, because not everybody in the room knows.
Yeah, so part one, project information, this identifies you, the town of South Berwick is the owner. Your owner's agents will be Tim and Jennifer. The project schedule, we want to start this as soon as we get someone on board, so this is not something that's going to wait. Solicitation intent is to see qualified professional firm. That's more sort of general intent. Existing facilities and conditions, this is just some history about the building that I dug up through some research. Interestingly, eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. Event timeline, so Tim and I worked on this together and Jennifer to work this into the council schedule and so forth. Some of those dates are a little challenging given the holidays, but you know, it works out. We expect this to be, what did I say, three to four week or months, thank you, four month process, yeah, a little overtired, sorry. So project overview, this is trying to get to get our design team to understand the work that was already done so that we can leverage that, so we can use that work to save on fees and to tell them what we really want to do. We want to compare the cost of a very specific renovation here to the cost of new construction. And then scope of services outlines in detail the various components that we're asking them to look at. And to John's point, you know, this is the balancing act of how far do you take the design now when you're still making a decision of if you want to renovate? So item six, I'll just read that one as an example. Identify structural components that may require further analysis, including roof structure as may be required for additional insulation, walls, and foundations for structural integrity, and floors for proposed loading conditions. So we're saying, look at those roof rafters. If they're two by sixes, you know, we're probably going to have to reinforce those. We're not asking for the design to reinforce them, but let's budget some money to do some roof reinforcing and, you know, because we suspect that we'll need it based on the size of what's up there. So not asking for the full design, but getting a professional to look at it to make sure that we can move forward confidently. I know with the library project, there were some concerns about that. And then item fourteen, that's the big one. So being very specific about the cost for the first report that we got, we have one line item, four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. This, we're going to get a breakdown of some of those costs, some of those broken down costs might be square foot cost, but it's going to be, you know, square foot for sprinkler, square foot for power. So it will be very detailed, and once you add all those up, you get much more confidence in the actual number. Deliverables, so floor plans, so that we know what we're actually costing out. We can count outdoors, we can quantify metal stud and gypsum board partitions, et cetera. Narrative describing the proposed system, so again, that our engineers are actually costing something out. They're not going to design the whole system, but they might do some calculations to determine the loads that are going to be required so they can, you know, in general, size the amount of cooling or heating that's required and get parametric costs on those on those pieces of equipment. We added a rendering just so we can show the character of some of the major public spaces and then to bring all this together into a final report, so you can evaluate it. Additional services, so if we've got someone who's vested, who's invested this much and gains this much institutional wisdom by doing this work, we want to be able to leverage that for full design. So this basically says, if we decide to renovate, we have the option to extend the contract to that particular design firm to finish, finish the design.
That's nice.
Yeah.
That's a nice option to have in there.
Yeah, again, trying to preserve the value. So we're spending money on this, let's make sure that we get that value for the next phase of the project. Existing documentation, send some to the website where the reports that have been done so far are posted. Some legalese in there, formal contract will be a boilerplate, contracts, insurance, selection process. So the council is going to be the selection committee. Tim, Jennifer, myself, and Mike will be facilitators, so just helping with the process. We do not have a vote. Selection schedule. That doesn't say much, more legalese. And then the evaluation process and criteria. So it's a two-step process. There'll be a qualification phase where, and you know, numerous firms will submit qualifications, packages. It basically says who they are, who the design team is, and other projects that they've done that are relevant. So phase one is to review those and pick three to five of your favorite applicants. Those shortlisted firms will then go on to the next phase where they submit a formal proposal. So what you're trying to do is reach as many firms as you can with a relatively low bar of walls package is sort of standard information that firms have, their marketing team has at their disposal, they put in for it. If we think they're a good fit, we bring, we ask them to go to the second phase, which is to develop a proposal to do the work, get more specific about relevant projects, and come in for an interview. For each of those phases, we'll have a evaluation matrix. So we'll list out the criteria and the firms that we're evaluating, and we can put a one to five rating on those if you think they satisfied them or not. That's something that I can help facilitate. And then the same thing will happen during the formal proposal phase. You'll have your matrix, we'll listen to the interviews, you fill out your matrix. Sometimes you can fill it out based on the written proposal and just fine tune it during the interviews. Other times you want to hear all the voices and then do your whole, your whole matrix. People have different approaches. In the end, we'll tally those and determine who are the one or two most qualified firms. You, you, you rank them in order, and then after you've decided who's most qualified, you review the fee proposals. So on page four, the last paragraph says this is a quality-based selection process, so you determine who the most qualified is. But if the number one firm that you choose is an outlier, if their cost is significantly more as determined by you than the competitors, you do have the option to negotiate with them. If you can't close the margin, then you can select the second most qualified firm. So that gives you a lot of flexibility so that you're not selecting only based on quality and then paying an exorbitant fee that you maybe weren't or interested in doing. Uh there's an informational meeting. It's always a good idea for a renovation project to make sure your design team actually comes to the site and sees what they're actually getting themselves into. Uh oral presentation and interviews, this is information for the teams that they understand what we're expecting as part of that. As part of the interview process. And then submission requirements. So these, this is a description of each part uh of the qualifications package and the final proposal submission that the firms uh will put together for you to review. And fee at the end is just again specifying that that's a separate PDF. So we will review the packages first and then review the fees and reconcile the two and select a firm. Any questions?
I have one.
Yep.
Backing way back to the beginning. Um it's straight ahead, you put interestingly enough, that this qualified for the National Historic Registry. I'm assuming that if it did and we went through the paperwork, there could be grants associated with that. But does that does that then lock us in as far as what we can do in the building?
Only if there's federal money involved. So if you do apply for those grants, you would be required to meet the Secretary of the Interior's standards for renovation projects. Um you know, they're pretty open, you know, the the goal is to save the historic objects that you have. Uh but adaptive reuse is definitely a category that they support. They'd rather have a renovation done than knock the building down. Um so yes, if applying for grants, then certain, there are certain um requirements you'll have to meet. If there's no federal money involved, there's just, it's it's a best practice sort of recommendation issue.
Thank you.
And and to be more specific about that, this this uh there was a submission for a South Berwick as a historic district, the South Berwick Village District. Uh and the Town Hall was listed as a contributing resource or a contributing building to that district. So it's a little different than um being listed individually. So to use UNH as an example, the whole campus is a historic district, but only Thompson Hall is is individually on the National Register. Yeah.
Any other questions for Ken? I just, I have a question about in your professional experience regarding um the fee kind of proposal, kind of quality work first, is that like an industry standard? Will we be an outlier as far as this?
Um well, I mean, as I described it, and I think during the informational meeting, we can all talk about our expectations. So concept design is ten percent. Is it ten percent design? We're looking for about fifteen percent design. So if design fees are ten percent of the construction, you know, ten percent of ten percent plus another five percent, you can do the math in your head. That's that's our expectation for the fee at this phase.
Um this is, I think, very thorough and gives us such a kind of defined process to go to use go forward. So I think that's something that we really needed. Thank you for your help on this very much. Any other questions or anything from anybody?
No, thanks both of you, and we'll pass that along to Mike Lasso again, everybody. This is fantastic. This is, again, this is what I was looking for, just a lot more in depth.
Yeah.
Very well done.
That was our goal.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Anything up on that topic, Ken?
No, just that on the uh when we talked about the selection committee, obviously the council uh and myself and Jen, because of Ken's uh very low level of experience creating this kind of RRPQ document and the where he's done the uh the evaluation process, the criteria and the selection process, a lot more than I thought. I would request that executive consultation committee be be part of that. So that Ken and Mike join us, answer the technical pieces. Uh myself in general, obviously, represent the town and the county. Or I would not do folk without that.
Yeah.
And I just, so we need to do, you know, if there are any changes, I need to know they are so Ken can craft those. If not, then we need, I'll need to move documents, I want to move documents, follow one way or the other.
Okay, so I guess action for us between now and next meeting, if you have any questions or edits or anything to this document, if we can channel them to Tim in the next couple of weeks. And then if if any changes are needed, you'll coordinate with Ken and then we'll plan to finalize that at our next meeting.
Correct.
Okay. So if anyone's got any changes, some of your questions or anything like that, send to Ken.
Can we try to have it done by next week? I'd like to give him some time if there is any questions, right?
Right, that's why I'm here tonight. Hopefully you previewed this document, you looked at it, read it. And if there are questions, we've got the expert sitting in the audience, I gave up this time to do that. I would ask, recommend him so we can get it done tonight so that I can, so if anybody thinks that they're seeing something, they don't understand something, or missing something, anything like that, please.
I I'm good, but I'm just speaking for myself personally. I'm good with how how it's written, how it's done. So I, you'll hear nothing from me in the next video.
Council Minahan, any other thoughts? Oh, good, that's great. Council Costello, your thoughts?
Yes.
Wonderful. Does it be, uh deal with each other?
Yeah, I was specifically happy with the um the square footage part where it broke it down by tasks or job as opposed to just a square foot number for the whole building. Um just knowing that you can do square foot estimates, absolutely. But they're so different in so many trades. So making them responsible by for breaking it down by trade is exactly what I was looking for. So yes, I'm very happy with that.
Okay, Council Sarah, anything you'd like to add?
In additional services on page three, there's a, you mentioned Shell had the option. I know we mentioned like if we do a good job, you'll also get this. But I guess my concern is if it's not what we specifically called out or there are missing things, like does this language? It's not in a contract, so I'm sure we'll find, but that's word specifically Shell is just kind of getting me up. Awesome.
Where it says the town shall have the option to extend the services, correct?
So my world shall means we we have the option, right? In in government documents where I work, shall means you're gonna do it. So it it means we have the option to do it, that's how I read it. I and but I can see where you're going the other side of it, um but.
Uh yeah, I I mean, I feel like we're fine because of the have the option portion of it, because it's it's the the terms must, shall, and will are used in interchange with the English doctrine. All have the same meaning. They are denoting a basic requirement which any firm must provide or perform, or they are denoting the action the owner or designated third party will perform. So I feel as though that means we have to give it to them. Um and there's no help for us. Yeah, see, I feel like I read it as the town, like that of uh there will come a point in time where there is a decision that the decision decision that the town shall make of, do we want to continue with this firm or do we not want to continue with this firm? That, anyone else? I I I guess what I'm trying to, I'm I'm comfortable with the language. I don't know, Ken, if you have any, yeah, thank you.
I I can see your confusion, but uh it's, but that's pretty standard language. And it does, the emphasis is on the option. Uh so you don't, you don't have to do anything. This does not obligate you to extend the services to that particular firm. So you may choose to go with the renovation, but you're dissatisfied with the quality of the report that you got. And you can go out to bid for a new firm to finish the design from fifteen percent to a hundred percent design. Yeah.
Um any other questions or edits or anything to this? I'm comfortable with this language as well.
Okay.
Um I would say if if anything does come up for anybody, anyone reviews this in more detail, like if we if we got anything to you by the end of the week.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know. Right, just the holidays coming up, and I want involve Mr. Western on all Thanksgiving, I do it if I don't have to. And buy a lot of everything to you for the twenty sixth by Wednesday when we leave. The week before, next week.
Twenty second, twenty third, or the twenty eighth.
We'd have to have it by Wednesday at some point.
So I I need changes, I'll need changes ASAP, I can get them to, again, if there are any that you see. Um if there's a reference on a word or something, um I can reference it to leave a couple. But this is a much better document than I've seen written in any RRPQ that I've ever worked with. So I wanna, again, thank, thank Ken and thank uh Mike Lasso, Jen, everybody who put in time. There's a lot of effort into this, and I really appreciate the help.
Um so it sounds like, I mean, it seems that the council thinks we're in pretty good shape as it is. Um so I think we're 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 good if anything comes up, we'll call it, reach out, guys, but um I think.
Yeah, if you miss, you know, if something pops in your head, just email me, whatever. Give me a call.
Okay. Um all right, so we'll plan to um take official action on that at our next meeting. Thank you again to Tim and Ken and Mike and all the people out in that. Um I think we're in a, we're on a good track. All right, next order of business, December twenty sixth meeting. Um so given, trying to count our web days, the Christmas is a Monday then, right?
Correct.
Um.
And Chair, I move that we do not have a meeting on December twenty sixth.
Second. Uh is there any concerns or anything, Jen, from like a?
Just might have to have two people, two people come and see how many consigned treasures were, so we can.
Okay.
If if not, because it's over the holidays, if we're away, we can always grant Tim the permission to sign that in our place for that one week like we had in the past.
Yeah, I'll be around for the holidays, so.
Me too.
Yeah. Um. Any, does that, is is there anything with the um RRPQ, looking at the timeline? That we, do that screw up anything with the timeline?
No, that's why I'm trying to get it on a
Cool.
Oh, next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, actually holiday, I believe holidays was in that timeline.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um any other discussion on canceling or or canceling the country? All of the favorites, the I, John?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi.
Hi, motion five zero, happy holidays. Um all right, that's all of our new business, uh Tom, I don't know your part.
All right, the highway department, rarely have little front street, have been paved, things completed for the year. Uh they've started picking up leaves around town, although it doesn't look it, but they have been. And we take the crews that secretly growing new ones and putting it back down every day, we don't know. And basically inspection's been completed, Boys Corner Road has been completed and striped. Uh millings from Boys Corner Road have been distributed on Crook Lane where the old red line was. At the fire station food pantry, um they installed a replacement, called it a twenty four, twenty eight Liberty Street. Police department had one arrest, seven accidents, thirty eight traffic stops. And Berwick Academy is requesting their CSI camp for the school year. After having great success with it, uh the CIS camp for the past summer. Two sections are gonna be held starting in the spring and two sections in the summer. Sergeant Stevens will be instructing those courses. White apartment had seven calls yet today, it's four hundred nineteen. They have the open house on ten twenty nine because of success and study attendance throughout the day. Recruitment table was well attended, a dozen applications were handed out and received, well backed for review. The goal is to add four to six new firefighters and honor rookie schools starting in early twenty twenty four. The tank truck has gone in for a scheduled bodywork to approve uh on eleven six, and is expected to take three or four weeks to complete. Emergency management office is not having the luck securing state accounting and made funding. Repairing generally the high school, um which is designated our regional shelter. The estimated cost for repair is twenty thousand, replacement generally would be over ninety thousand. Um team continues work with the school district on a next step. Coenforcement issued two billion permits, one internal plumbing permit, three violations investigated now being handled. San Valley Estates, the preliminary plant stage is in the the preliminary planning stages. A new mechanic shop will be in front of the planning board, the sketch plans on eleven fifteen. The new midlife application will be in front of the planning board, the sketch plans on twelve six.
And Friendsville Library held a big sale during the election and it sold out of all the food they brought. So that's right, they raised twenty one hundred dollars for the library that day, so thank you all. On November seventh, they did a DUI adventure group and they made lanterns and they had a good turnout for that event there as well. Recreation is starting to plan for their winter programming and they will be having a new thing, one of them being included a hula hoop class. That sounds fun. Uh working on finalizing the details and those new programs we're still rolling out later this week. The school is doing a district-wide program on Hope, starting on Monday. And the recreation has been asked to host a table in the lobby um that evening and just to show off the um programs that they have available. Seniors on eve had veterans lunch and that was very successful. Their next luncheon is on fifteenth and that will be hosted by the Rotary Club and they'll be having a Thanksgiving lunch. That setting has completed their review of the tax math revisions. Um and once she gets those back completed, Verona will work on getting the GIS updated as well and getting the new PDFs printed out for the code office. The three-year reevaluation process with KRT will start the first week in December. They will be starting in the downtown areas with the zone to B one and R one A. Verona will make sure that all the necessary information is online and with the police department will have their profiles, pictures of their cars. They're gonna have town badges, they'll have their own badges with their own um company logos on them. And it should not be a surprise for anyone, you know, seeing these people posted at homes. So um Verona is also halfway through the annual sales return to the state where the sales values and ratios from July one, twenty twenty two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three are reported to the state. And we have an opening and a closing for admin assistant and we have received three applications so far. Hopefully to get that on session filled by the first of the year. The town clerk has issued now thirty one hundred transportation stickers. The election results was a thirty two percent turnout, one thousand nine hundred eighty ballots were passed for the town election. And they have also been issuing new dog tax for the twenty twenty four year. The transfer station has been cleaning up and moving dumpsters around in preparation for winter. The all the tires were picked up and cleaned up last week and this week all the AC units will be picked up and taken away. Economic development, as you heard tonight, Denise is um working on the downtown revitalization committee and getting that formed. They had their kickoff meeting last week. And for Nance Benefits fifty, um I have had in the last three weeks, twenty one business meetings and forty six staff meetings. The employee benefits renewal uh documentation has been sent out to all staff. Uh on November second, foreclosure notices were sent out for unpaid twenty twenty two property taxes and they will be foreclosed if they are not paid by December seventh. Finishing up with the audit by the end of this month and auditor will present to the council on first meeting in December twelve. I have also started some prep work on the budget for the coming fiscal year. And um we also have an opening in the clerk's office too for um a part-time clerk in customer service today, and that's open right away. The applications that as well.
Under administration, um I've had twelve business meetings, fifty four staff meetings and four appointments. Um York Camdons had a meeting with York Camdons Executive Director, Ken Burke Bush. Um we are finishing up the admin training and we're going through the end of November. We'll be issuing training certificates, all the staff that attended, okay? Um the human resources position, we contracted with a contract human resource person to do our contractors HR stuff. Uh considerably less than the town attorney. She's a, it's called main.
HR main consultant.
HR main consultant. Um she'll handle everything, we'll still do the in-house benefit stuff, but this is for personnel, vice personnel investigations, personnel policy writing. And that stuff, she does a charge for the first fifteen. And that stuff, she does a charge for the first fifteen minutes, which is. Three hundred and twenty-five dollars on the call, that terrorist average in fifteen minutes, and. Usually, you know, our conversation is less than fifteen minutes, almost a figure. But she won't even charge us, she will only. Come down, she was an H I director for many years in Kidderay, Kidderay School System, and then. Uh, other municipalities, then she went out on her own. She now has. A bunch of cool municipalities. She came very highly recommended, very, very financially affordable. We interviewed. Another, we did interview two HR firms. To see who could help us. Uh, this, this six months of the year will pay out of the legal council fee, and then we'll budget for some of it next year. Uh, this will be a great assistance to all of us, and helping us. Able to pick up the phone and solve problems, just pass the ball to her. She's coming down on the third day to do a training for the top and heads of the staff, so they can meet her. See her. And that helps solve our, some of our HR issues. Uh, I attended the Veterans Day luncheon at the community center and spoke, said a few words. Uh, we are based after the. Air quality, air quality reform, we're getting. Uh, close to replacing Clark's office cottage, just, they, they went in to test that, it would be, we take that. So, in the model, we do, we're gonna take, we're gonna do something there. Um, at the same time, the clerk has asked about replacing her workstation, which is twenty-seven years old. Um, does not need A J compliance, and so we think it's a good idea, so we're gonna try to, kind of look at. Pulling that out at the same time, so then they don't have to. Top it around it, and just put all the, tap it down one swoop and. That back section and. Take care of that, get them a new workstation. Um. Yet, obviously worked on the R F Q, uh, attended the Purple Heart Proclamation. On eleven eleven, the Veterans Day Ceremony, I want to thank the councils who attended, and, and also both, and they seem very, very pleased with that. I attended a, uh. Meeting on last Tuesday night. In North Berwick on, with eleven other communities on reviewing our contractual contract. Um. The. The contract's up in twenty twenty-five, correct?
Twenty twenty-four.
Two, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five? I don't know. Twenty-four?
Maybe the term is just up in twenty-five.
Okay, so, two more. All of them coming up. And, uh, one of them we have in conjunction with all the thirteen of the thirteen new new. Uh, so we're gonna be negotiating with, we have three runners to negotiate with. Uh, I was asked the, on that negotiating committee, so, um, myself. Uh, someone from Sanford, someone from Kenny Bonk, the way from town, I don't know, outdoors, myself, and sit on that committee and negotiate, so. Uh, it was a great meeting, got to meet a lot of good people in, in my community, so we're working on that. While I was there, I could find out some really good information that I wanted to pass on to the council. Uh, first off, Kenny Bonk was attempting to get a new town office building. They've been working on their project for an excess of eight years. They had a thirty-acre development, and it went. Um, it didn't get finished with the land, the town ended up with the land anyway. And they were gonna put a brand new town office there, they spent all the time sculpting it out, designed it. And it was gonna be eight million dollar project. Um, town did not pass it. On election night. Over there, we're now there, and ironically, what came with that, we were talking. Um, I was talking to the public works director over there, and he said, Charlie, right now we feel. All the employees feel defeated. We put a lot of time and effort into getting the specs for the building, getting everything right, we worked on this for two to three years, and it turned down. He said, right now morale is in the bottom of the toilet bowl. And I said, wow, right? So on the other side of that. North Berwick is renovated in two thousand and three, sure? He renovated their, their school for. Their old school building for two million dollars, doing. So I had a chance to talk with him, and he said, I'll give you some pointers. He said, one of the things we did when we did the building design, when they did the bid for the building. The people wrote the facts, and he said, we didn't know because we weren't engineers, but they put in the best lighting. The top line lighting, they put in the top line windows, they put in this top line wire. So he said, I had a really good rapport with the contractor who was gonna do the work, and when he came in, he said. Um, I can save you two hundred thousand dollars on that lighting, we can just go to the next level. I could save you five hundred thousand in the windows, and so he said, to be aware of that, sometimes they'll put in. Ask a question because they put in the top line stuff. And he said, we ended up going over budget, but we ended up finding savings in the other areas. Um, and the other thing he said is make sure that you, if you do a renovation like they did. He said, make sure that you have enough expansion space, because here we are, he said. You know, fifteen, twenty years later, we're full again. So, he said, we're back to trying to figure out how to get off, but they showed me their offices, their offices would be very tiny. Very, very tiny. So that's been information, um. And that's really about all I have. Any questions?
Hula hoops.
Yeah, right?
Yes. Kidderay Farmer Market, those are vendors that sell them, they're not six dollars a minute. In case you want them.
Thanks.
Custom hula hoops are very expensive when you walk up and go, wow.
Who knew?
But if they need them. You're fine.
I will pass it along.
I, I missed the number of foreclosure notices. Is it moved last year up?
It's about the same, um. Yeah, it is seven, and I don't know exactly what it was last year without looking back, but it.
I like, yes, I'm issued. Of the seven, six, I repeat, offended. Yep.
Any other questions for, for them? Um, we'll do council member comments before we go on to executive session, Jessica.
Congratulations, ma'am. Thank you. Um, just a quick question, if we need to add the balance for itself for, for you to the next agenda, to vote to close the street?
Correct.
Um, and wishing everybody, um, a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to say, um, the Veterans Day ceremony that was held here on Saturday was absolutely phenomenal. There was a speaker, Colonel Rudy. Um, he was raw, he was real, he was motivating. At fifty years old, he, I wanted to enlist, like, seriously, like, he was just. Fantastic, and I think one of the, the greatest things about it is, um, when we were setting up. Um, and we were putting out chairs, sadly, it was said that only twenty people came to the ceremony last year. So we hesitantly maybe put thirty chairs out, and at last calculation, there was, um, over seventy people that attended, so. Two hundred percent increase of people that attended, which I think is fantastic. And I hope in the years to come that that number just keeps growing, because it really is, um, a special day for, to recognize our, the men and. Women, um, and all service persons, um, of our military, so.
We also had a pretty phenomenal national anthem singer in the Veteran's Day ceremony, and Melissa sang the national anthem for us, which is a fun surprise to people. Um.
Uh, welcome back, congratulations.
Thank you.
And just, uh, thank the, for the, the hard work on the, uh. Town halls songs, because they're really thorough, so, thank you.
Done.
Well, Mallory stole my whole, uh.
Sorry.
Melissa, and for rendition of the national anthem, I will not embarrass her, but. I'm gonna go with, it was right up there with Whitney Houston at the Super Bowl. Very song, it's a very hard song to sing, and she sang it beautiful, with no music, no anything, it was incredible. Uh, I was, I was bought away by that. Um. Uh, Colonel Rooney, yes, what a fantastic speaker, uh, him, his family, his wife, retired lieutenant, he has three of his four children either in the armed services or going in. Um, Seacoast Christian Academy is very, very lucky to have it. Um, fantastic speaker. And thank you for everybody who came out and voted. Brought Mallory and I back for three more punch still here. Are you okay?
Oh, my God, everywhere.
And with that note, um, wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, um, for me, I'm just really happy to be starting my third term on the council, this will now be my seventh year, John, what year is mine?
Ten.
Ten. Um, it's really been, it's been great, and I'm really happy to be here again. Thank you to the council for, um. Trusting in me to be your leader again. Um, and then I want to put a plug in, and this weekend is closing weekend for Elf at Marshwood. High School, um, there's a show Saturday, sorry, there's a show Friday evening and Saturday night, a Saturday evening show, and my daughter is Jo Beal, so. Plug there, um, that's all I've got, we've got a, um, executive session, so if somebody can make a motion for that, and then Barbara, I'll just keep track of this.
Madam Chair, we, we go into an executive session, it's like one M R S A, section four oh five point six A personnel.
Second.
Thank you, the motion seconds, all those in favor are going into executive session, Tom?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
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 Motion five, five zero.
Thank you, everybody for attending.
Yes, thank you, um, for anyone on the, who's catching up on the recording, we're gonna end the recording here, because we're going into executive session. And while I share the motions with Barbara. Thank you, everyone, thanksgiving.
Beware of the deer. They're not in the woods.